Frank says that he can hear you, but for some reason I can't hear you.
And before your lips were moving and I couldn't hear you, but I could see.
Let me try this again with Monica. Frank, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me now? No?
Can you put up your volume?
It's up. Frank, is my volume loud?
Yeah, you sound pretty good.
Okay.
And silly question for you guys. Does my background look backwards or does it look the right way?
It looks the correct way.
Alright, it looks backwards to me. Everybody, I hear everybody very well. You all sound great. I'm not sure what the issue is, manager. Let me talk to Monica.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
I can hear you, Lyle.
You can hear, who can hear me?
Lauren Adman, I can hear you perfectly.
I can see you too, so how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Good, I may have a conversation. It was tough trying to let me talk or yet even video.
Oh, yeah? Can you hear me, manager? Can you talk? Can anybody hear her?
Can you tell her to speak again? I wasn't listening, sorry.
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes. Can you hear?
Yes.
Okay, hi, Lyle.
You're very faint.
Hi, how are you? I can see you.
I can see you too.
That's good. I'm tired of my, I've been working with Bartow, Florida, and they have a high incident of COVID. And we had to wear masks all day today.
Oh, no.
Like, uh, mid-time, they had over a thousand folks this weekend.
Well, we're not that bad, but we're still trying to be proactive and make sure that to wear your mask if you're vaccinated or not.
If you get sick here and have a heart attack, they can't take you to the local hospital. They gotta drive twenty mi- oh, yeah.
Wow, I guess we should count our blessings.
Yes, you should. So they've gotta take them beyond Winter Haven down here. So they gotta go about twenty miles, even if you're having a heart attack, because it is not seen as hypercritical, so.
A heart attack? Is it hypercritical?
Yes, a heart attack, like the big one.
Oh.
So it's really sad.
Well, how are you?
I'm doing great.
Well, that's.
Great, and you guys are doing well, too. Good feedback from your residents reinforcing what you guys are doing.
Oh, that's awesome. That's always.
Going in the right direction.
Has anyone heard from the vice mayor? I don't see him. If someone could reach out to him.
I'll text him.
Um, Anna, are you muted? Because I can't hear anything you're saying. You're not muted. Did anyone else hear her?
No.
Yeah, definitely not muted, because she doesn't have the muted.
There's no symbol. Still asked. Okay, so obviously we won't start the meeting until all the kinks are worked out.
Put, uh, the, the volume higher on your phone and see if you can, maybe you need to be closer to the phone.
Oh, she's on her phone.
The vice mayor's on.
I can see everyone now.
I can hear you, but not on the meeting.
We still can't hear you. I see you waving, but I can't.
It's okay, we can wait a few minutes and hopefully. Well, do we want to do a mic check with everyone else, Monica, to make sure that everyone else's mics are working? Vice Mayor, can you say something?
Testing, testing, testing.
Can you, Commissioner Davis?
Testing, testing.
Commissioner Llewellyn.
Hello.
Commissioner Adman.
Evening, I think everything's working on my end.
Okay, um, I guess city clerk and city, um, attorney.
Here, here, yeah.
Mayor, I'm here, I'm sorry.
Okay, I can hear you all.
Can you hear us, here the manager?
Yeah, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank God. Well, I can see why I wanted to go over this so many times. Can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Is this how you're going to participate, or are you going to try to get back on video as well?
I'm trying to get back on a, a video, but I'm not being very successful.
Okay, well, just let me know when you're ready to start. We can, we'll, we'll wait.
We can start. I don't, I don't wanna, um, hold this up. My preamble is, is, um, very short. And then I'm gonna turn it over to Lyle for a very small three-minute, eh, um, update on the community engagement, and then we'll move right into Frank.
Okay, okay, awesome, then we'll start. Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the Dania Beach City Commission Virtual Budget Workshop. Today is Tuesday, August the third, and it's five ten PM. Call the roll, please.
Mayor James.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salvino.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Present.
Commissioner Llewellyn.
Here.
Commissioner Adman.
Here.
City Manager Garcia.
Here.
City Attorney Ansbro.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll turn this over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, good afternoon, um, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, um, city residents that are participating in the call. Um, also, uh, city team, and also Mr. Lyle Summitt, um, who's participating with us um, on our first-ever community engagement piece of our strategic plan. This draft budget that will be presented tonight, um, is aligned with the priorities of the city commission's strategic plan. Hundreds of hours went into the time spent on this budget that commenced back in March with all the city department heads, as well as our finance director and, um, and the team. We're very pleased, um, that we have aligned this budget with the priorities of the city commission, as well as the past two years of ongoing assessment of our city, our streets, our sidewalks, our infrastructure, and our parks. This year, we're extremely excited about this budget, because we're able to engage our residents. We put a survey out there, and we're working with Lyle Summit on the last piece of community engagement. It was also a priority for this mayor, this vice mayor, and the city commission, um, to ensure that we put the budget process out there. We promoted it to ensure that we get community engagement. And with that said, I am going to turn it over to our consultant, Lyle Summitt, to give us an update on our community survey and community engagement part of this budget process. Mr. Summitt?
Thank you. Good evening, um, I guess it's more afternoon or evening, uh, Mayor and city commissioners. It is nice to see you again, and I've really enjoyed, uh, the progress and the plan that you developed. Uh, part of the plan, as we talked about, is engaging the community, seeing what their ideas. Uh, we, uh, I focused on some questions like, why do you live there? How do they get information? What do would enhance leisure and culture opportunities? What would make Dania Beach a more sustainable community? What would enhance our residential neighborhoods? And how can we enhance our beach, as well as what would they like to see in five years? What was impressive was the thoughtful responses that we got from, uh, your residents. They did give a thought, and they gave me good information. You will receive a report from me that links this back to your strategic plan. Uh, we had thirty-seven responses. Again, they were thoughtful. Uh, it was clearly that people structured the way they structured their sentence and gave us input. Overall, your strategic plan and you as mayor and commissioners aligned very well with the feedback we got from your residents. Uh, I, to start with, they love the Dania Beach community. Let me repeat, love your community. Why? Why do they live there? It's the beach. It's this sense of community, sense of connecting with people. Uh, and the scale of the town. They do not want the large, super-high. They want to be able to have that sense of community. Uh, other major themes. Investing in the beauty and enhancing the beauty of your community. Making it more attractive from your parks and your public spaces to the city, but also investing in the infrastructure, so they can see the quality that you have here. Beach, beach, beach was a common theme, and beach. Uh, many commented about the grill, which we talked about. So it reinforced the investments in upgrading the beach, as well as your vision, your goals, and your actions and priorities. They feel that that investment in the, the, the beach was, is critical, because that's why they stay there, and that's why they moved there. Family, recreational programming was highlighted. More recreations for all generations. Also, upgrading your, your parks, which we talked about, parks and sports fields. Uh, upgrading those to make them really a better asset for the community and for their usability by their residents. Investing in the infrastructure, basic things that we take, we talked about the streets, uh, the other infrastructure that they see. But it's also, if you look at it, it's the implied infrastructure, the foundation of the house, that if you're not taking care of your infrastructure and investing in the future, the whole community collapses. The interesting one is how do they get their information? Social media and Facebook. So the investment in that communication strategy that we talked about and enhancing that is a major theme. Again, I will prepare a report, but I would suggest to you your vision, mission, goals, and priorities align with the input that we got from the community. And tonight is an opportunity to link the strategic plan to your resources and investment. The budget is a tool for making it a reality. And we talked about a lot of things. Tonight will be a key, uh, in terms of setting the direction. So I thank the residents that gave us their input. Uh, they were, it was very meaningful, and again, thoughtful. It wasn't just flip comments that I see a lot. These were thoughtful reasons, and I tried to ask questions that reflected that they could answer easily. Not, what's your vision? They can, that's a nebulous. But I can tell you why I live here, and I can tell you what's gonna make it better for me and my family. The family orientation and the sense of community is what ties Dania Beach together and makes it different than other communities around you. So hopefully that was a helpful overview. My job is, I think, to pass it to you, Frank. Is that right?
Yes, Lyle. Thank you so much, and we look forward to your report.
Thank you. Good luck going forward. Any questions for me? Thank you. Have a good meeting.
Have a good evening, Lyle. Thank you.
Uh, bye.
Now we'll have the budget presentation from Frank.
Hey, give me one moment here just to get my show ready. Alright, everyone. Um, thank you very much for the opportunity to, uh, present this to you tonight. I know we've been having a few meetings, um, with, with each of the elected officials to go over some of the high points of the budget, as well as answer questions, and, um, I have to say, first of all, thank you to everyone who helped in preparing the budget, including, um, Adam Siegel, our deputy finance director, and our controller, Jamie Guzman, as well as some of the other finance department staff. And from all the input from all of our department directors and all their key team players, who most of them are on this presentation tonight. Um, and I also want to thank the city manager for her vision and her direction on preparation of the budget. And, um, and then lastly, to thank, um, the elected officials for, for your input and for your consideration of this budget and everything else that, um, that you bring to Dania Beach. So, um, without further ado, everyone see the presentation? Hey.
Yes.
So, the theme of our budget this year is the city on the rise, strategic planning for today's challenges and tomorrow's opportunities. Uh, we thought it was important to acknowledge two of the, of the big initiatives going on in the city right now. One being the Rise Initiative, which is being implemented in full force with our, uh, staff and our employment community, as well as the strategic planning, which is, um, which just laid out by our, our moderator, Lyle. And I can tell you, uh, unequivocally that everything in that strategic plan that was established as a priority item for this coming year is in the budget. There, there's not one thing in there that was left out. There was a list of budget workshop items to be discussed from the strategic plan. Every single thing has been funded. So really, it's, um, it's, this is time to execute as we move forward into this new fiscal year. Just to give you a brief overview on our millage, as you know, we did not increase the millage rate this year. Um, we had a, a six-point-three-seven percent increase in assessed values that netted us additional revenue by keeping the same millage rate. Also, the increase in assessed values allowed us to decrease our debt service millage slightly, since our debt service actually also decreased a little bit. We have our first budget public hearing established for September thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one. That's a Monday. And that, in that meeting, we're gonna adopt our special, our, our, all of our non-abnormal assessments, as well as have our public hearings on the, um, the budget and the millage rate. Our fire rescue assessment, as has been discussed briefly in, uh, some of our meetings, is, is increasing almost twenty-seven dollars. And just based on the, the structure of our properties in the city and the way the call data shakes out, um, that nets us the same revenue as last year. It's about ninety-one percent of our fire protection costs. The stormwater assessment, we recommended an increase from forty dollars to six dollars. As you know, keeping up the infrastructure in this city, the, one of the most important and critical ones right now is the stormwater system. And that increase will allow our public services department to continue executing on the plans, as well as to implement the stormwater master plan that's going to be developed in the coming year. Lastly, our residential solid waste assessment is increasing around six dollars and forty-eight cents for the coming year, just keeping up with the cost of our waste management contract and keeping that fund solvent. As our assessed values continue to increase, as you can see on this chart on the left, we are now at our peak, uh, peak assessed values, and again, the millage rate hasn't changed in ten years. So, um, our tax revenues are continuing to be invested into the community, especially these past few years. A lot of investment in the infrastructure, a lot of investment in our staff, and, and just that infrastructure, that, that investment in the city is gonna see, uh, huge benefits to the community in the coming years. We've had pretty steady growth in our, um, our property segments and our, our property values, obviously. Our single-family homes value average taxable value is a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. It was around a hundred and sixty-two thousand last year. And condominiums also went up slightly. Forty percent of all of our properties have a homestead exemption, so that limits the increase in their assessed value every year to the cost, um, basically the CPI that's established for the year, and it was just under two percent for this year. So, um, anyone who's not homestead saw a market value increase, and that overall increase was six-point-three-seven percent. So, just to talk briefly, we talked a lot on our individual calls about challenges and opportunities. Um, I'm gonna go through this relatively quickly, as I also list out a lot of these initiatives a little bit later in the presentation. I'm going to go through this relatively quickly as I also list out a lot of these initiatives a little bit later in the presentation. But we know we've had challenges with our infrastructure, even Lyle, who conducted our strategic planning is fully aware of that. And obviously, that was a lot of the feedback that he received from both the department directors and the elected officials during strategic planning. So you're going to see continued investment in the roads and sidewalks, sidewalk master planning, corridor master planning, implementation of the street lighting master plan to light up areas of the city that need to be lit up. They're currently dark right now. Our ocean park is is a huge asset to the city. We've talked about it being an economic engine. Really is a destination and it provides a lot back to the city from those who partake in the amenities. And we are getting the infrastructure situated right now with utilities and drainage, undergrounding utilities and improving the drainage down there at the beach. The beach erosion and the dunes, those are going to be resolved in partnership with the Army Corps of Engineers in the next several years. The amenities down there are going to be revitalized, revamped with the increase to using the grant to augment Adler Park and rebuild that as well as the current beach grill RFP that's going to be moving forward, that's going to develop, redevelop the grill and potentially the area to the north of the grill. The pier is a huge attraction, as you all well know, and there it's currently being evaluated for structural integrity. Repairs are moving forward quickly to make sure that we don't have any types of catastrophic issues down there. And as you know, the salt and the the wind and the and the weather down there really beats up any building. So we want to make sure that we don't have any issues going forward and there's a significant investment in the coming year in the pier. Facilities are a major issue. We we can't neglect the maintenance. We can't defer maintenance. Things need to be taken care of when they become a problem, not when we think we should handle them. So that's been the theme of this administration the past few years. And it will reap major benefits in the future of of not having facilities falling apart and becoming disrepair. We've had to demolish a building. We've had to have remediation done in certain facilities and that's just something that that we can't afford to have happen anymore. We have aging facilities and we have to maintain them very well. Our parks facilities and the programming has been somewhat outdated and it's going to actually be more in tune with what the community is looking for as they desire for a city that they live, work, and play in. So I know your recreation team is working on that in the coming year in addition to the parks master plan that's going to be kicked off in the spring. Utilities, mentioned the drainage, big projects on the way as well as the southeast stormwater, which has been underway for a number of years. But the rubber is really going to be hitting the road within this coming year and that project is going to be moving forward in earnest. Water issues, water supply to our growing population. We have the C fifty one canal reservoir that's going to be securing us a water supply for the future and allowing us to maintain our water use permit. And our sewage discharge, you know, when we flush the toilet, we want to make sure things leave the city and they don't back up into the streets. So we have continued work to revamp and enhance our sewage discharge, our lift stations, infiltration and inflow projects to make sure that our pipes are sealed and that they're not gaining in stormwater or leaking out discharge into the ground. Our workforce, again, in in on the rise initiative theme, we are looking for a a way to continue to train and develop our staff, enhance their benefits, make this an employer of choice for people, not a last resort as some places become, as they don't look at their benefits and look at the way that they they attract and retain new hires. So continued training, continued investment, continue looking at our departments and making sure that staff are employed in the way they should be and reorganizing whenever necessary and possible. And and again, increasing our health insurance benefits, increasing our life insurance, increasing long-term disabilities are all really good things for us as an employer. Now, as we've continued to grow and and change and and sort of go through this Renaissance, we want to look at aesthetics and beautification. We're proposing the beam team who's going to be out there of the city, not only looking for problems, but looking for opportunities to clean things up and make the city a better place to live in and travel through. Our beach rangers will be out there on the beach, keeping up standards, maintaining rules, maintaining order whenever necessary. And just overall being there to inform people of the way to use our beach, keep things friendly and light and hopefully we have a good outcome from that. We also have an increase in security down at the beach and the marina as well in the budget. Historic preservation is important. We have currently two historic buildings next to city hall, next to our fire station. And they're going to need some type of restoration and possible relocation in the future depending on what the desire is to utilize that lot. And we have five hundred thousand dollars in the budget to put towards that pending the outcome of the architectural assessment that's going to be performed by our consultants. With this growing population, we want to retain and maintain the quality of life and all of these investments are really leading up to that. I know that it was mentioned by our our strategic planning moderator that people desire to keep the city sort of low-scale or not have, you know, this overgrowth of development. And there's going to be a look at the comprehensive plan in the coming year to update that and make sure it's in line with what the the community desires and what the city commission is looking for for the future. And lastly, we have a, we we are growing into a world-class city. The public art fund is a huge investment in the city that's being provided through all this private development that's currently occurring. And you will see that continued. I know we had the discussion last night and that's going to continue as we move forward and implement that master plan. The Dania Beach Grill, mentioned briefly, we are, that project is moving forward to select developers to partner with the city and bring that back to life and really kick off a tremendous amount of growth that's going to occur down at the beach. We want to have our financially sound operations that was a strategic planning outcome and provising all financial policies to make sure that they're up to date and that they reflect current standards for financial considerations. We also have implemented some internal service funds for facilities, fleet and information technology that makes us stronger as a city, more resilient, provides balances moving forward to be able to do things that need to be done when they need to be done, not deferring them because we don't have funding readily available. Lastly, on this, we want to make sure we can afford the parks master plan. We've made that clear in the budget that we can. We talked about it briefly a few months ago and and we are confident that as we move forward, we're not going to have any financial issues. And we also discussed that being a no-tax increase financing and we're going to maintain that plan as we go forward. Lastly, on the pension and other post-employment benefits, we were able to reduce police and fire pension costs this year due to some changes in the actuarial assessment of those plans. All those funds are being reinvested back into the city, back into the infrastructure and again, towards that parks master plan. And then the other post-employment's benefits funding policy was adopted last year. That's going to basically get that plan funded by twenty thirty, make sure retirees have the healthcare that they are entitled to. So that's pretty much the extent of our discussions we've had. I'm going to move forward and talk a little bit more in specifics about some of the budget items. And one thing that that we increased this year was the city commission contingency. There's both a two hundred thousand dollar citywide continue or general fund contingency as we usually have, excuse me. We also have an additional twenty five thousand dollars per commissioner that's going to be available for for projects. And and that policy and that program will be determined as we move along. So we're using, I know there's a surplus in the budget, which I noted below, but we're also using some reserves. The use of reserves is really for one-time things, grant opportunities, things that we can invest in that aren't recurring. For example, funding towards the hazardous mitigation grant for the BSO substation, funding for the Adler Park grant project. That's three hundred thousand dollars for the city and another, excuse me, I have somebody bring me water, I apologize. Another two hundred thousand dollars towards the pier refurbishment project. We also have four hundred thousand dollars for use of public safety impact fees for a new rescue unit to expand fire rescue services. That was something we talked about that we we need more boots on the ground for EMS in particular right now. And that that new truck is going to be to supplement our services and we can use impact fees for that. We also looked at our disaster recovery reserve and as it stands, we currently have a tremendous amount and we've got eight point four million dollars. We also feel that that is multiples of any hurricane event. Hurricane event could cost us around three to four million dollars for debris removal and repairs that are outside of our insurance coverage. The chances of having two catastrophic events that could cost four million dollars each in any one hurricane season is very unlikely. So so we could, we could afford to actually reduce that reserve a little bit and put it towards some other things that are also disaster-related such as our vehicles and equipment, our beam team equipment, some other key equipment that that can be used in emergency situations. We also decided that, you know, the five hundred thousand dollars that we can put towards the historic preservation could come from disaster recovery reserve as those are some pretty key and strategic assets for the city. Lastly, we have that budget surplus that's in there. Again, when you take all these one-time items out, we have the ability to afford this parks master plan at some point in the next year to two to three years. A lot of these major investments should start to taper off as we've accomplished a lot of the things that have needed to be accomplished and we get into more of a maintenance mode and and we're looking forward to that. Brief overview on the general fund, almost right down the middle path is for public safety, that's police and fire. And the rest are all of our operating departments as well as administration. Public services around fifteen percent of the budget, then general government fourteen, and then it goes smaller from there. Our recreation department, their their budget has been growing. That's a key area for the city that that allows us to be the best city that we can be and and again, investment is warranted there. So our police and fire only went up around three percent combined, which is a relatively modest increase. So we can be thankful for that. I think we have a pretty good partnership with BSO. And and again, from a budgetary perspective, we don't seem to be having any any issues with our public safety. So to talk about some of the investments, implementation of the citywide street lighting plan, one million dollars towards additional solar lighting, retrofitting, additional solar lights. We're going to do a ten-year bank loan for that. That's really the best bank for our buck. Interest rates are pretty low. And again, on ten years, we can probably even do better than two and a half percent and we'll issue that in the fall and move that forward. We have annual maintenance of roadway and alley repaving, four hundred fifty thousand. The sidewalk master plan is ninety thousand dollars plus additional maintenance dollars that are going to be used to to start implementing that master plan. We've talked about the holiday lights and the the lack of lighting in the medians and there's an additional two hundred fifty thousand next year towards median electrification that's going to allow for lighting and signage and anything else that we would want to put in the medians as far as beautification. There's a corridor master plan, around seventy percent of that is going to be funded by the tree preservation fund as that is really geared towards primarily the canopy and the the landscaping aesthetics of those corridors. Speed home compliance is going to continue and hopefully be finalized with an additional hundred fifteen thousand investment. We also have ninety thousand towards bus stop improvements, planning for additional, you know, benches and the signage and everything like that. And then one item that was put in when we finalized the proposed budget was a roundabout. We don't have a location for that, but it's something, it's it's a placeholder item. It's something that you can workshop as as a group and decide on where you'd best see with input from our public services department on where the biggest needs are. And and this could also become a beautification element within with a public art piece and some other nice aesthetic details. Recreation has a couple of significant investments. We talked about Adler Park and the Firdad Grant Project. IT Parker renovations at two hundred fifty thousand, much needed and overdue. It should really bring that building into a great status for rentals and maximize the revenue and should be a good return on investment. Melaluka Park needs a new playground and I know that we talked yesterday on one of our meetings about the other small parks. There are a tremendous number of of investments in the small parks. I know Eric and Cass and the team looked at every little park and including Mildred Jones and Melaluka and even Dana Cove and they looked at benches and the dock that's having some issues and all that was actually in the budget for next year, but some of it's going to be advanced now due to need. But there is a pretty significant investment in those smaller parks as well and that's, you know, separate from the master plan that's going to be coming forward. Lastly, there's a hundred nineteen thousand dollars towards lifeguard towers. Couple replaced this year, we're going to replace a few more next year. Information technology had a few investments, a couple came out of strategic planning, one being the IT master plan to look at our overall IT needs as a city. And that allows to really focus on our work and our investments as we go forward. Public information, social media, getting information out to the to our residents and businesses and citizens. We need to redesign the website and make it more user-friendly. We have the the projects piece that now that we've completed entering all the budget requests, everything is going to be shifted over to our projects portal and that's going to go live in the next two months. So that residents can go on our website and see any initiative, capital project that's going on, see the status, see who's managing the project, see how much we've spent, see how much our budget is. And that's going to be a really great thing for them to see. It's linked in with our capital improvements in our budget. But separate from that, we're going to be doing a full-scale website redesign. We also have an item in there for smart networking, public wifi. Our networking within the city sites and between the city sites is not as resilient and not as strong as it could be. We do have pretty good internet connections, but we need to bring things to a point where we have minimize our risk of internet going down and having stronger connections. We've had issues with public works as they connect wirelessly to the to city hall. And we want to get all that cleared up and put us on a track towards having the strong network and implementing on top of that public wifi at certain sites in this coming year. Lastly, HR has put in a few requests for software and technology that are going to make us a better employer and a better recruiter. A couple of tools and a couple of programs that will enhance their abilities in HR. We have a comprehensive update to our fleet with a number of vehicles, seventy eight thousand for the beam team, eighty eight thousand for the beach rangers and parking team. Public services, one hundred and forty nine thousand dollars in new vehicles. And then lastly, some other administrative vehicles that need to be replaced for sixty four thousand. All those vehicles we typically purchase on state contract and we get extremely good pricing on those. There's also investments in heavy equipment, much-needed back-con truck that can be used for both for all of our utilities, including the water sewer and stormwater, and they will share that cost. Irrigation truck to be used throughout the city, a valve turning machine for the water utility, the trailer display units to be located around the city and and put emergency messages where necessary for other public information. And lastly, parks and beach utility vehicles for twenty seven thousand. There were several requests to change or add positions. Those were supplement that's in your budget book in the pocket. Project manager for public services, that's going to be split among all of the public services operating funds, including the utilities. The beam team, which is for full-time equivalents. Equipment operator three, who's going to focus on street lighting, which is also very much needed right now with all of our street lighting programs coming online. And then a reclassification of a solid waste manager position to better align that person's work with with the needs of the city as we move forward. Code compliance and parking, we have the beach rangers, that should be a total impact of sixty two thousand. In recreation, there was a request for a recreation coordinator, one at Frost Park, to help with the aftercare programs and other spillover programs that are going to be occurring due to the closure of CW Thomas as we move forward and implement the master plan. And once the master plan gets implemented, we know that there's going to be increased need for staffing. All the staffing plans will occur as we get towards the closure of the construction phase and start planning for programming those new parks. Beach lifeguards on call had an hours increase. We typically had a tremendous amount of overtime and part-time over budget and we realized it was because we were just budgeting too low. So this is kind of a one-time shift to increase the number of on-call hours so that way we don't, we have everything within the budget and we're not having overruns year after year. Lastly, we requested a reclassification of our controller to as another assistant finance director. This makes us a stronger city and this also provides an opportunity for for us to have better control, better accountability and and better overall strategic planning for our financial. Public safety contracts, as I mentioned, was a three percent increase. There were no changes in operations requested in those programs. Community development has a comprehensive plan update for ninety seven thousand, as I mentioned earlier. A rack table update, which is thirty thousand. I still, Eleanor, don't kill me, I still don't really know what that is, but she explained it to me once. And lastly, a public art consultant who's going to implement the public art master plan for fifty thousand dollars that should come from the public art fund. I mentioned earlier and we talked about on our calls that we implementing, we're implementing three new internal service funds. The internal service fund is kind of like a utility fund. It's a self-sustaining operation. It's funded by fees that are charged and those fees are charged to other funds in the city. They pay for their share of the use of those staff. Our facilities, our fleet and our information technology are three areas that really serve citywide. And and those have, those budgets have been basically taken out of the general fund and created a fund on their own. And this coming year, there's a number of new projects. The for facilities maintenance, the IT Parker renovation, additional city hall improvements, janitorial services contract, building department remodel, city hall garage and breezeway, which I know we may talk about that this evening. That was, you know, we discussed that briefly on a few of the calls. Um, you know, we discussed that briefly on a few of the calls um last week. Um, but all those investments are gonna be in the facilities maintenance fund and and we're sharing the costs and it really allocates things in a way that makes us more transparent. Fleet management, um we also allocate our vehicle costs into there. Um, I mentioned the new vehicles, new heavy equipment and also some fuel facility improvements to um improve our our. We have fuel systems that we actually dispense into our vehicles and this is an improvement that's needed at this time. Lastly, the information technology fund, I mentioned that we had a few um master plan website redesign, all this technology is in that fund and again, those costs are gonna be allocated out across the city. Um, I'll move through enterprise funds relatively quickly. There are no changes to the water fund rates. We talked about the C fifty-one canal. We have four hundred thousand dollars in combined water plant improvements. We have um some design on water plant, on water line replacement projects that are forthcoming, as well as a shared in the back on truck cost. We were fun, we talked about infiltration and inflow. Again, also no increase in the rates. Um sewer system improvements, that's just miscellaneous improvements as needed. Um, those are done, we budget those throughout the year and the sharing in the back con truck. Lastly, enterprise funds, we talked, we have a twenty dollar increase that generates additional million dollars in revenue. We have three million dollars in neighborhood improvement projects coming up in this budget in addition to everything that's already going on. Additional two hundred fifty thousand dollars towards tidal valves, those are the ones that um prevent the canal from backing up into the streets. So they're gonna continue um adding those around the city wherever necessary. Um, Northwest First Street Project, that's a part of the the improvements along that corridor. Um, and that's being tied in with paving and the crosswalks and everything. And then lastly, the share of the back con truck. The remainder of the enterprise funds, we have the parking fund, the um. Paramarina Fund. So the parking, we have a C tech garage design of one point two million. We know with the changes that are going on down there, one of the things that we lack on on very busy days as it stands is parking. And this is the first step towards uh designing a new garage. And replacement of the existing parking meters for a hundred nineteen thousand. Continued improvements in the beach. Phase three uh project, we currently have about eight hundred thousand dollars in the capital projects fund. We're gonna see continuance of the Ocean Park Master Plan implementation and design. North Beach Rescue Room is two hundred fifty thousand dollars. I mentioned earlier, we have increased security at Ocean Park. It's gonna be every day overnight, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, gonna have security down there at the beach. Separate from the security that are also gonna be at the marina. The Dana Beach Grill RFP is moving forward and we're gonna see that really take uh take on this year. And then lastly, the Northern Sand Dune Projects, we already discussed. The Paramarinas, they're both managed by a West Director, both self-supporting operations charged, uh supported by the fees that are charged. We have a peer safety and rebuild project. There's nine hundred thousand dollars in phase two funding going forward in this new budget. Um, there was a market increase to Marina Dockage Rates that was recent recently approved. Um, obviously results in increased revenue to that marine operation and allowed to provide for the additional security and enhancing the amenities down there at the marina. Lastly, we talked about the savings for the firefighter pension plan. Um, all of our other employees, for the most part in the city, are in the Florida retirement system. And Florida contributions only increased to small amount by point eight two percent. Funding for the FY twenty-one, twenty-two um OPEC, we talked about that and and also all of our pensions, we basically our pension costs across all funds is three point three million dollars. Um, just wanna conclude and say that this recommended budget reflects the assessment of all of our citywide needs. As the city manager mentioned, um the ongoing assessments are resulting in action. And investment in these strategic planning initiatives. And um again, thank you to everybody, all the city commission, the budget team, department heads and everybody else who I thanked earlier. And um at this time, um we'd like to open it up to to you for discussion and answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, if you have questions or comments or wanna discuss things, if you could use your raise the hand tool. Um, I'm gonna ask just a few. I I have a question, Frank. Oh, is there a cap on the assessment fees? I'm trying to figure out. Every year it seems like the fire, the storm and the solid waste, those assessment fees go up and I understand that, you know. Inflation happens and everything goes up, but I I don't know if there is a cap on these fees, is there?
Yeah, the the cap is, it's not the same for everybody. The cap is basically the for our fire assessment is to the extent of our fire. Rescue services cost and that's not, and nothing medical, only the fire protection. Right now, we're at ninety-one percent of that, so we don't have a whole lot more room if if we wanted to even increase tho- that fire assessment rate. The the solid waste assessment is just based on the actual costs. There's no cap on that. Same thing goes for the stormwater assessment. The the thing with the stormwater assessment is if we get to the point where we're assessing and we're hoarding cash. To the point where it just doesn't make sense, then we would lower it at that point and spend down the reserve. So. Again, um, the only one that really has a firm cap is that fire assessment and and it's based on the actual fire protection cost.
Okay, and then I saw the traffic calming, um and it says roundabout. Could you kinda explain that to me? Are we putting in a lot of roundabouts? Or is are, will there be different ways? I know that especially we were talking, speaking about, I think that was JA Ely. Um, and we were talking, we were having that discussion, we were saying that there were different ways of traffic calming other than just roundabouts. So I wanted to know the thought on the traffic calming and why it just says roundabout.
Uh, city manager, do you wanna address that?
Yes, thank you, Frank. So the three hundred thousand dollars is is a placeholder. The three hundred thousand would be a very large roundabout. Um, but if you were to break that up, you could get a combination of a smaller roundabout. Um, you can get uh chicanes, you can get um crosswalks. Um, you can get a different surfaces on on the ground. Even art in public places is considered traffic calming. So basically, we're calling it roundabout because it's it's the a placeholder that we have. But three hundred thousand dollars gives us opportunity to move, to do more than one project. And to do a combination of traffic calming initiatives.
Okay, so it's not slated for one project, it's just for a traffic calming fund per se?
That is correct.
Okay, and um the janitorial services contract. Is that just for city hall? Is that for all of our facilities? Does that include our parks and recreation? Um, facilities and their concession stands and things of that nature?
If I may, I'd like to have Fernando chime in or denser to discuss that. That's currently out out to, it's currently out to bid right now. And um and it's gonna be comprehensive. Go ahead, Fernando.
Good, good evening, everyone. Yes, uh, it it will be comprehensive, as Frank said, uh, it will include city hall, public services, the water plant. Um, the Dyberg Swanson House, um i- i- when that, when that is co- reopened. It's not gonna be the scope that's further beyond than what it is now. It'll be the same scope, same facilities. However, um as far as the cleaning, it will be focusing uh again on on the cleaning after hours. Um, cleaning as needed and of course, that's if that's infecting gate, given the current situation that we have, but. It's not going to encompass new facilities. If that's what your question is, it'll be the same, basically the same.
What the is it existing um contract encompasses, so that's why I'm asking.
That's correct.
Okay, um, and the last thing, uh, the summer youth employment program. Do we have any monies in the budget to be able to accommodate this next year? I know I spoke briefly with you about this city manager. Um, I I've been keeping up with Latima and um and the program that's currently going on. As I understand, there was only one youth that had dropped out of the program due to medical reasons. But everyone else is still in the program and she actually sent a, I just received an email. Of the addresses and of um also the locations where they are working. And I am going to invite her again to um a future meeting to be able to really give us a recap. And how it went, but I would really like to see us um. Just just budget for this as it is, it is a very great program for our youth and I think that it can continue to grow. And I think that we can also, you know, partner with some, some, I don't know, businesses that will be willing to also add sponsorships to that.
And Mayor, currently, currently that's not in in the budget. Um, by by next summer, as we discussed, we're we're going to hopefully be in full construction mode and um at CW Thomas. And parks, so that staff will move and will spread the staff eh and the team between Frost and um and TJ Millie. Um, but certainly, if if we want to put, you know, some resources there. Or use some of the 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 funds that we have for for mayor and commission, we could, we could certainly um do that.
No, I'm sorry, I'm speaking about the summer youth employment program.
Oh, okay, the, okay, the the ones that were, that um the kids are employed in other businesses and and other.
Correct, correct, that program.
Yes, currently, we don't, we don't have that um in the budget. Um, but if you and your colleagues would like to put some sort of appropriation or maybe identify some some funding from the. From the two hundred thousand dollars that we have for mayor and commission, um, we could certainly do um whatever you you direct us to do.
Do we, do we not have a surplus in in um the budget right now? I mean, the proposed budget right now? I guess Frank can answer. Don't we have a surplus in it, so?
We do.
Of how much? I thought it said one point something million.
Yeah, we have one, one point three million right now.
Okay, so I I I mean, not a ridiculous amount of money um to be able to employ. And and not employ all of them, maybe do a match with the um organization that that does it. I I, I mean. I would like to see that happen um from from this because it benefits the entire city, all of our kids and and. It's definitely giving them an opportunity to start at the workforce. I know some of them are um at schools and libraries and. Uh, in those things, so I definitely wanna see if we can allocate um monies towards that, so if we could. Um, I'm not, I'll wait till everyone else speaks. I I I guess, but I'll, and then I'll come back around to that with with my ask, but that that's something that I wanted to bring up. Um, Vice Mayor Salvino.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just have one question. We're talking about the street uh, street lighting. You know, I, we're we're paying a lot of money for street lighting. What happened to the days when Florida Power and Light used to put up regular. Streetlights on the street when construction was being built and roads were being put in and uh that doesn't happen anymore?
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Dean Shorakunoz, Deputy Public Service Director. What happened is that FPNL already installed seventy streetlights this year and they are going to install another twenty-five uh lights this year. So FPNL is installing lights, but also that next fiscal year for the solar lights, we are going to retrofit three hundred and eighty. Solar lights, the ones that they're not working properly. But FPNL already installed uh uh seventy lights this year.
Yeah, I realize, I remember we talked about on the budgeting of repairing um. The solar lighting that we already have and installing some other ones. I just, I'm just wondering why we, Florida Power and Light used to do that and and was able to, we, I mean. For years, we never had solar lighting. It is a benefit in certain areas. I just didn't understand when, I I just remember when I was younger, we used to call Florida Power and Light, I'd see them come out, put a pole up and. And put a light up and it would light up the area, but I don't see that happening like it used to. So I don't know how we got away from uh having free lighting instead of starting to have to pay for it.
Yeah, there are some areas that they have to get through the uh uh right-ofways and they're not really feasible. Those are the areas that we try to use the solar lights. We go through the FPNL for permitting, but when they refuse to install those ones and then we go through the solar lights.
No problem, just just curious, thank you.
You are welcome.
Senator Lou Ellen? Oh, I didn't know if I took your hand down, sorry if you did. Okay, Commissioner Davis?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Um, first, I'd like to say thanks to Frank and the team, the entire city manager team, um administrative team. You guys did an out outstanding job. It's really wonderful for me as a new commissioner to um be a part of creating a strategic plan and then seeing it put into fruition with the numbers. Um, that said, I I asked most of my questions during my one-on-one. But uh one of them still stands out, which is uh the City Hall Breezeway. And I just wanted to make sure that we are always being fiscally responsible. I know we have a surplus and we have different funds. Um, that are available, but here, this is just something that's a sixty thousand dollar uh cost. And I just wanna make sure that whatever we do, that, you know, it's it's considered a best practice and that, you know. I I'm not sure where that came from, but it just to me seems like something that wouldn't be a very high priority. And is it something that we need um to put in our budget at this time? So um that was just one of my concerns. Um, the other one, I spoke with Frank about the ARPA funds and I believe that we got an email saying that we had like sixteen million dollars. Uh, coming from that and then I just look forward to um being able to get together and have a workshop about that in the in the future. Uh, commission meetings. But pretty much the rest of my uh questions have been answered. Uh, Mayor, to your um. Uh, I guess to your statement about wanting the youth program to come, I absolutely love youth and I love the education portion. Um, but as somebody who's studying different programs and doing program critiques, it's important to have a program evaluation. So I would look forward to this person coming back and giving us specific details about how well that program ran. And how well um the the kids did in that program uh prior to to saying that we would support it. But if it was well, then that was something I would do. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Um, so then I would ask that a tentative number be put um pending. Uh, Latima and her team or whoever is in charge of it to come back to us. And um if we are happy with the program, then we could vote to um allocate those fundings. If not, then that funding will go back to the general fund. Um, I I, I mean, I'm seeing that if that is an issue, I wanna make sure that you're comfortable with, you know, with the information that you would need to be able to appropriate those funds. Um, in the next, next budget cycle. Does that work, Commissioner Davis, for you? Does anyone else have um questions about that in particular? Um, okay, Commissioner Lou Ellen?
Yes, I was just gonna say, I I I think it's a good idea to have a placeholder for it, basically, and have some money set aside. Um, I I I do think though that we probably should do it the same way we did it last time where we're dealing with the overflow. Um, students, the the individuals who didn't have the the um. Who they, they actually didn't have the money to do it, because I know it was, there were several students, several individuals who didn't have, they didn't make it to the program. But there wasn't enough money in the program through uh, what was it, Career Source Brown?
Yes, yes, it was seven, I think it was seven students that were the overflow, but it was also only seven students that were the overflow because we, we didn't put out anything with our. It was too late to then put out anything that has our logo on it to really market it and say, look, this is what the city is. Is providing, even though we won't pay the entire amount, we would kinda go half and half with them on the amount of students. I think that we would have gotten a better response had we marketed on on our website and our social media and and they know that, you know, we were a partner with the program. Um, if we do it like we did it last time, we run into the problem again that just coming at the last moment and and not being able to really put. You know, we're putting money into it, but we really aren't getting the notoriety from it because it was too late for them to then put our information. On their, on their flyers and their brochures and everything else, so. Um, I I definitely would like to just put a placeholder on it and and see how the conversation goes once it gets there. Um, and and try to do a match that way.
I think I'd like to hear a little more from uh, what was her name again, Latima?
Well, yeah, she's gonna come back, but we are having, we're making decisions now before she'll be.
I understand that. I'm just saying, I don't mind having a placeholder. I just, I don't know that. All of that would be the way that we wanna go. I wanna hear more from her about how she thinks it would best work. Especially if if the issue is, is that they weren't able to get into the program fast enough, maybe we just need to advertise it faster. Um, as, you know, it's, it is, it's a program that's already set up. It's not our program per se, we're just helping to fund it. So, you know, I I wanna make sure that Chris Lawrence Brower gets the credit that's due. So, you know, I, I want to make sure that Career Source Brown gets the credit that's due them. Um but if it's just a matter of us not being able to notify the people or people not being aware of it as early, maybe that would be a better resource to put the money into in order to just get it, act, the, the information out to people and make sure that they're all aware of this program early. So we can discuss those, those specifics later when she comes back to talk to us, but yeah, so I, I don't have a problem with putting some money aside.
Okay, any other comments on that? Um is $50,000 um a reasonable ask for, to put money aside and not saying that we have to spend it all, but that would be the, the max that we would spend um in going in half? Is there any issue with that?
That's fine with me.
Mayor, would you like us to remove that $60,000 for the breezeway or, or not? Or reallocate that?
Uh, I didn't, I mean, that wasn't my issue. I was just speaking. We'll, we'll, okay, we'll go back to the breezeway after we knock this, this issue down. So Frank, could um put a placeholder for $50,000 for the summer employment program?
Noted.
Okay, and now the breezeway conversa, oh, I'm sorry.
I was gonna do my, my, my two topics I wanted to talk about, but we can go to the breezeway if you want.
Okay, we'll hit the breezeway, then we'll come back to you. Uh Commissioner Davis, wanna have that conversation with the city manager of what you would like? What exactly does the breezeway entail? Could you be more specific with me so I can really understand it?
Yes, Mayor, um in one of the meetings, it, it wasn't a directive, you all had.
Can you put your volume up?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so in one of the um, the commission meetings where you discussed also traffic calming, you discussed a, a possible eh eh way to, to connect from, from the parking lot um into, into City Hall. We had looked from, from the parking garage eh into City Hall, and it was approximately $60,000 to, to, you know, put a breezeway and, and connect via some sort of, of canvas. Um we, we could probably save more than half of that if we do it in the other parking lot. Is that something that you all would like to do? In, in the parking, um not in the garage, but in the uncovered parking. Um but I just wanted to see whether or not this is something you all wanted us to move forward to. We had gotten the quote, and it was $60,000 to connect from the garage to City Hall.
I'm trying to visually see what that even looks like. Um I think, I think that's, it's, it's just hard for me to visually, and you can just, you can just speak on it, um, Commissioner Llewellyn, but I'm trying to visualize it, what it would look like, so I'm a little just confused on the aesthetics of it or the engineering of it, but I, I, I mean, I would like to see what that looked like. I don't, but go ahead, Commissioner Llewellyn.
I, I was just gonna say, I don't know that something like that's practical, um because we do live in a state where we have hurricanes and um you know, any, anytime there's a hurricane or anything like that that's coming, you know, I would assume you have to take everything down. Um unless, unless it's some sort of a permanent structure. I don't know that that's something that, it, it just doesn't seem practical. Um you can, I, I mean, you can spend that much money on umbrellas and, and everybody have an umbrella or raincoat. Um you know, as far as, um and the other concern is that if you have a, a covering there, I'd be concerned that it's going to be, it's going to affect homeless um to come and sleep under it or to stand under it when it's hot out. Um and that could also develop into another issue. So um I just, to me, it doesn't sound very practical, and I think we could put $60,000 to much better use somewhere else. That's all.
Commissioner Davis?
I guess that's, that, that was my point when I initially saw the canopy. I would much rather put a placeholder for youth program, something that's going to benefit the community, something that's going to better our citizens and residents, rather than so, a structure that is just going to be for the small few, um you know, at different periodic times. I don't think that there has been such a need for it um in the past. There's, there's, there was no situation that, unless it just rained outside and somebody said, I wish I had a covering, um then I don't think that that is something that is necessary or necessarily practical. So I would rather see better use of that money and something that benefits the residents. I would, I would like, as the manager kind of suggested, to take that placeholder for that canopy and put it towards the youth program and pending the uh evaluation from the program director to, to use the funds for that. So that's my suggestion.
Commissioner Ottman and Vice Mayor, your take on it?
Yeah, it doesn't really seem like anyone's uh hot for it, so maybe it's something we just want to look at next year.
Good.
You're good, okay. Um, city manager?
So um what I'm hearing is to delete the $60,000 and maybe take a look at it um in the following year and um take $50,000 out of that $60,000 and put it in a placeholder for summer youth program. That's what I have in my notes, but I think Frank has it as well.
Okay. Everyone's okay with that? Okay, Commissioner Ottman?
Thank you. I was just gonna say, before I lost my thoughts. Okay, so I had two things I wanted to discuss. I, I brought it up um first with the, the, the city manager um about a, it probably, it would be an update to our plan of climate resiliency um update or doing a separate master plan. Uh I asked her to research it, so I'll, I'll see what she has to say about it, whatever she thinks is best. But so you, eh, think of it as something that addresses um these issues that come up every single time the developers um maybe have a project. So issues as it relates to the roadways, this would address that. Um issues with our beach. Um issues with, with drainage and flooding in residential and commercial areas. Um it touches on all that, and in, instead of just sort of uh, you know, listening to what the developers say in terms of what they're going to do, um what they're going to do to, to address some of these concerns, having the master plan would allow us to move forward with a, a little bit more of a plan in place already as to what the best practice is to do based on what other cities are doing. Um St. Pete is really, is a, is a big leader in, in all of this. Uh they were one of the ones that are going to be featured. Um I think, Mayor, you're going to the uh, if you're going to the US Conference of Mayors, they're, they're gonna be featured for what they've been doing um with their lead program, which you may reme, uh remember, I brought up a couple of me, meetings ago about doing something like that. That uh green standards in building pro, program was part of their comprehensive master plan, so it came out of that. Um so like any master plan, it kind of allows you to move forward in a thoughtful and meaningful and organized way without just trying to say like, hey, you know, as like uh fads come up, sometimes you'll hear a fad that's, or a trend in another city that they're doing, instead of sort of piecemealing it um into our projects, uh really doing so in a more thoughtful way. So manager, were you able to get any information on that?
Yes, um Commissioner. One of the things that we discussed as a team is exactly what you just said right now. We, we have components of, of resiliency that are taking place right now um with the planned beach renourishment, um with, with the lift stations, with the new construction projects, um with our investment in, in the historical structure and, and the hardening of, of our buildings. Um what, what we can do rather than have this piecemealed in, in several projects that we're doing this citywide, I think it would be a great opportunity as we update our comprehensive plan to ensure that we have an entire resiliency component uh of, uh as part of this plan. So what we could do is we could go in the track of incorporating this element in as we update our comp plan or we do it totally separate. As I discussed it um with Candido, um we found that there's a good opportunity now with the comp plan to ensure that a, a sa, a, a chapter per se of, of resiliency is incorporated that takes everything that we're doing, puts it together, but also grades what, what else is missing, so it becomes more of a comprehensive chapter of our, of um, of the plan that includes resiliency.
So would, would there be a budgetary impact to that?
There, there may be. Um as we look to get the quotes and um get the numbers to update our comp plan, we could see if we have budgeted enough or if we need to add an additional 10, 15, $20,000 um in regards to um this, this larger piece that would, would in, incorporate the resiliency chapter of the comp plan.
Well, so from what I've looked at with the other cities that have done this, when they do their, they did it as a comprehensive update uh some of the cities down here, like I said, St. Pete went all out and did an entire uh, a whole separate document. Um but the, for doing the update, there was, you know, environmental specialists and uh industry experts who were involved in that. So would this be comparative to that?
Our, our goal would be, eh Commissioner, before um our first eh budget hearing that we could be, we could come back and tell you that what we have set aside is sufficient or we need to have an additional 10 or 20,000. Um so within the next couple of weeks, we would have that answer for you and kind of give you uh like a menu. If it's incorporated with, with the comp plan as a chapter, it would cost us X. If it's a whole separate master plan based on XYZ that they would be offering and the benefit to the city, it would cost Y, and that's what we plan to bring forward um to be able to give you the, the, the most um accurate number and so then you guys could decide what route you would like to take. But I definitely agree with that it needs to be incorporated somehow, be it a separate master plan or a chapter of our updated com, comprehensive plan.
Yeah, and that would be perfect. I, I would love to have the two and to sort of um that we can discuss uh how exactly and to what extent we would want to prioritize it. Um okay, so great. I look forward to that. I appreciate that. And then, so my, my second thing was um to carry over the discussion from last night about the uh, the.
The CIB.
Thank you very much. Um any funding for them? Um my, my, uh, my request would be that we fund them for the year for the arts in public uh the, the arts of public places, the um art in the hall. Uh there was two numbers that they gave. Um one for, I guess it was the, the exhibition and then the, the singing or whatever spoken word talent, and then separately, they have the documents um for the, the artist reception. So I combined those two numbers and um.
And the art installation. So one was for the art installation and then was for the um art in the hall. Reception and the entertainment.
Right. So I, I, I believe those two numbers came out to maybe 8,300 or something like that. Um so I was going to say uh that we, I, I put down 8,000, but if you want to give them the 8,300, uh that's fine for me as, as well. Um I, I, again, just like I said, they've, they've done proof of concept. It's well enjoyed. Uh they are not uh indulgent in their, in their finances and how they spend the money. They, 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 they work on the bare bones and they do a great job, I think, with it. So I would love to do that, if y'all are okay with that.
Does anyone have, I, I know I see your hands up, but I'm not sure if it's for this item or other items, but let's deal with this item. Anyone have input on this item? Burp, visually raise your hand. Okay, Commissioner Davis?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh I agree with Commissioner Ottman on uh those two factors uh for the 8,000. That's what it looks like to me on, on this paper. Um but my only issue is that we do have this new debt delta variant out here and that I don't know how many in-person events and how many um you know, how many exhibitions and things that we're going to have. So I, I don't have a problem with what they're doing or what they're asking for, but I'm just wondering how we're going to be able to take the safety precautions into having the same type of events when we are under different circumstances. So that's my concern.
Frank, can you explain what happens with the money if it's unused? If, you know, if they're un, if because of the delta variant or something like that, uh we decide to hold less or not any?
Yeah, I mean, are you, when you talk about the art in the hall funding, are you talking about funding it in the general fund?
She may not know. Um so Commissioner Davis, typically the CRA was allocate, budgeted for those funds. That's why we had always had these conversations with the CRA. Um so those monies typically came out of the CRA's fund. Seeing as all of the new developments and now that it's a citywide board, um it would have to come from the general fund, so I, uh we don't just allocate all the money to the CACAB and they just spend it how they want. It, it, it was a liaison from the city or the CRA at the time that kind of worked with them to pay for those fundings to make sure that, you know, this was the request, this is what we have to pay and everything was done properly.
Yeah, we could, if, if we put that in the general fund and it doesn't get spent, it just, it just rolls out at year end. So it would have to be appropriated again the next year, or, or if there's any money left, you could repurpose it for something else in the current year. It's totally up to you, but it would just basically um just go away at the end of the year and then be re-appropriated the following year.
Okay, great.
So, so everyone is okay with $8,000 or $8,300? That was uh Commissioner Ottman's request?
Let's pick a number. I, I don't want to have an undefined number.
Okay.
If we say 8,000, let's say 8,000.
It says 8,000 on that.
Okay, $8,000. Everyone's okay with 8,000?
Yes.
Okay, there we go. Move on from that. I, I know, I have your hands up. I have Commissioner Davis first and then I have you. Go ahead, Commissioner Davis.
Um I just, I don't know if this is the time for this not, or not, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone had the newest application for charitable funding, and so I don't know if that's a separate conversation or if we talk about that now, but um I did want to make sure that uh the Lighthouse for Students, that everybody had seen that application and that it was um added to this particular uh budget for discussion. So um in going through the applications that the four now, five applications that I've read through, um I'm comfortable because of the allocation and they were able to put a du, a specific number for all of the services that they have provided specifically to Dania Beach residents. Um I'm in favor of approving that along with the uh Lighthouse for Students, so like I said, I don't know if this is a separate conversation or if we can bring that up now.
You can bring it up now and, and um Commissioner Llewellyn, you can jump in on the conversation.
It wasn't on that. I wanted to talk about the resiliency project, which was two topics ago.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll deal with Commissioner Davis as she just said it, and then we'll go back to the resiliency. I'll make sure I'll note that. Um if there's any, I have to pull it up, because one of, one of the charitable contributions um was for a lot of money.
$19,000 or something?
Yeah, and, and just because they requested, we don't always give them everything that is requested, so I'm not comfortable giving any of the organizations $19,000. Um but other than that, I'm, I'm definitely okay with Lighthouse. Does anyone else have any?
I have comments.
Okay, go ahead.
You know, I, so cor, correct me if I'm wrong, those of you who have been on here, didn't we discuss some, because it's, this is always a like a, a little back and forth when we get to the charity section of, of the discussion. Didn't we come up, and maybe you remember, city manager, some way we said, we discussed another way we said we were gonna go about doing the, the charitable donations, like maybe each commissioner gets 10,000 or 5,000. I, I don't know. I don't know, Mayor Llewellyn. Don't worry, calm down. I, I, whatever it was, wasn't there some way we said perhaps that we were going to do it? Or, or were we just going to continue to evaluate, you know, the applications as they came in?
The only thing, oh, go ahead, um city manager.
If I may, to the mayor, um for the past two years, you, you haven't funded it and, and, and you're. If I may to the Mayor, um, for the past two years, you, you haven't funded it and, and, and you're absolutely right, eh, Commissioner Ottman. Every time this topic comes up, you know, you guys have discussed um, the, the amounts, the, the legitimacy of the organization. Um, if it's a 501(c)(3), are, are they aligned with all the reporting, reporting and the requirements for transparency, um, that protects you and protects the city on taxpayer dollars? Um, when, when we decided to put that two hundred thousand, you know, in the pot for the entire group and in addition to that, eh, designate twenty-five thousand, we thought it could also be a, a good opportunity for you all to look at, um, you know, be it projects or, or funding or supporting, um, local, um, you know, 501(c)(3). So it, it, it's basically up to you, but this is a, a conversation that I had with the finance director and I think it's extremely important that whatever monies you want to put out there to local organizations, that we align that donation with, with the criteria, the legitimacy that, that um, we would work in regards to um, be it audit or, or that all their documents are in order and that it's also aligned with your, the priorities of your strategic um, master plan as well.
Okay, so I was hoping there was a process in place, but I guess I made that up in my head then, and it doesn't exist. So, oh well, um, all right, so however, however you guys want to do it, I guess there was what, maybe six or seven requests?
I, I, I honestly wasn't, um, I didn't know that we were back to allowing the request and funding it. I honestly didn't know that, so um, I'm sure a lot of, a lot more people would have applied had they known that. Um, there's only really been one organization that's been consistent with really needing our help and support and that has been Lighthouse Community. At this point in time, honestly, I would only be comfortable with giving it to them. I know they're located in our city and they've been doing a lot of the work and we've all been there and we've seen it and um, we've been a part of it uh, here and there. But because we haven't really put it back out that we are now again accepting uh, these applications and we don't have, we don't have a, a real process of how we're going to evaluate and say how much this person gets and that person gets. I, I'm really only comfortable with giving it to the Lighthouse for Students just because he's, I see your hand Frank, uh, because he's come before us time and time again, go ahead Frank.
Thank you, Mayor. We talked about this last year at the workshop that we had at IT Parker and um, and I, I talked about it, about how um, part of the problem is we don't have a policy. We don't have a, a donation policy to the community and, um, I've even spoken with colleagues in other cities where it got so out of control and it was so arbitrary that they ended up hiring a consultant to handle the entire thing, to take all the applications, evaluate them based on specified, agreed upon criteria and then they would recommend the donations. That way it was, it was actually decision-making was out of the hands so that it didn't seem like anybody was being favoreded by any of the elected officials. It made it a much more direct process. Um, I don't know if that's the way to go, but just so you know, if we get back into this again, it could start to kind of take on a life of its own and I don't think necessarily want to see that happen to the city. So um, I would recommend from the financial point of view and, and you know, making sure we're doing things the best practices to establish a funding policy and establish what the award amounts are for entity and each entity that gets a donation has to meet a certain criteria, et cetera. Um, that way it's just across the board, everybody is treated equally and um, and, and there's no one can claim that they were not favoreded or someone else was, you know.
Cool, um, Vice Mayor, you wanted to chime in on this or something else?
This, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I think Frank pretty much hit it on the, on the head. You know, we did talk about this uh, going back many years ago as well because there was always a same thing, everybody comes in and puts the applications in or just comes up in the middle of a, a meeting and starts asking for money. The next thing you know, you're hurting somebody's feelings and next thing you know, people are asking for five thousand to twenty-five thousand. I know, I know that there is um, a lot of people out there that could use our funding that we have. Our, our funds that we do put together are not really designed to be spread out. It's taxpayers' money, we have to be very careful what we do with it. I really think that Frank uh, has the right idea, I think maybe we should give it a little bit of time to uh, come up with a plan and if we're going to disperse any funds out, uh, we should know what we're doing, so just guessing. So right now we're shooting from the hip because, you know, we want, uh, the Lighthouse, we want to help them out. I mean, I have a couple of them on there I'd like to see, uh, but you know, I don't even want to go there because it's just going to start out down the line. So I think we should table it and when, and get a program together and get it defined and go from there, that, that'd be my, my suggestion.
Um, anyone else with discussion on this, just chime right in?
I would agree with what the Vice Mayor just said.
So, yeah, and, but can we put it on the agenda for, um, so that we can make what that policy is going to be? So can we place it on for uh, the next meeting?
Oh, I think-
I think they're going to need a little more time for that to do, for the next meeting, like you're talking two weeks.
City Manager, who's going to, can somebody be tasked with, with working on that and coming up? I mean, I don't know how I feel about hiring an outside consultant, but whatever, can we just, whatever the, the options are, can somebody um, look into that and, and like you said, uh, present us with uh, a couple of options? And the commission to decide what-
I'll get with Frank and like the Vice Mayor said, the, the August meeting might be a little quick. Um, so we should probably shoot for that first meeting in, in September. That gives us um, uh, you know, a, a good amount of time to be able to, to get that criteria, perhaps reach out to other cities or work with um, a financing.
Perfect, so we'll, we'll look for the, on that uh, first meeting in September, perfect.
Any other discussion on this?
Just wondering, is this also something that we can have a placeholder for? You know, and just say that-
Hold it for Lighthouse or, I don't know if anyone else of the people who have, just of the people who have um, responded to this. I, I, I know what Lighthouse has been doing, um. I don't know what everyone else has been doing or can't even tell you where a lot of them are located, so o- outside of, you know, reading this, so I definitely don't mind having a placeholder for Lighthouse. I don't know, I don't know how anyone else feels about it.
For Lighthouse? What's the amount for Lighthouse?
Five thousand.
We're, we're back into the same discussion, Mayor, we should table it, please. Because if that's going to happen, I'm going to start asking.
Oh, but that's what I'm, but that's why I'm asking, I said of the people who have turned it in, is there someone else on here you would like to see funded? That's, that's what, that's what I'm asking. I mean, it's only one, two, three, four, it's five.
I like Prestige Club, I like the Women in Distress. I mean, I, I'm, I'm for these charities who are, I mean, against domestic violence. I know that they only serve seven people, but I think that's something that if we established ourselves as a city where, you know, women who are being battered and abused have this resource in our city, this is something that, that would, could benefit, benefit our community. I know Lighthouse personally, like we all do, um, but I do like what I've read about the Prestige Club because it's about anti-bullying, it's about going into the elementary schools and it's about helping the children right here in Dania Beach. I love that they do etiquette, so I just don't think that we should just throw or just not even consider, um, you know, having funding for some of these, some of these charities. I think we should be associated with charities that do have beneficial resources for our residents, so.
Okay, what's your recommendation, Commissioner Davis? I see your hand, Commissioner Llewellyn. What's your recommendation on the numbers or the placeholder that you would like to see? And then we'll see if you have consensus for it and then we'll be able to move that way.
I would just like to put maybe thirty thousand dollars as a placeholder and see what, you know, see what we can do. I mean, we don't use it, don't have to use it, but I think we should have it there for discussion, so.
Um, and that would be after we come back with all of the necessary steps if we decide-
Policies and everything, but I think that we should just have something set aside if we decide that we want to fund, because I definitely want to fund the ones that are here in Dania Beach, but if we don't use it, then we, then we don't use it. But I think that it's worth um, putting something aside in the, in the event that we do use.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
I was just going to say, since there's five of them and I, I think none of us want to give, you know, nineteen thousand dollars or something, or even twelve thousand dollars to somebody, so why don't we put a cap on it and say five thousand dollars per? Put aside twenty-five thousand dollars and this way it covers the five that are there if we decide to do that and, and then it's at a maximum that we would go to.
I agree with that.
Um, Vice Mayor?
Well, we can simplify this, there's five of them there, just give them each five thousand dollars. Time limit is up, close the case and wait till next year.
That's what Commissioner Llewellyn just said, but we wanted-
She said, but, I'm talking about taking, getting to them now and taking them where applications, that's all for the year. There's five in, give them five thousand apiece, it's even, if they submitted applications and then discussions over for a year. It gives them, and it gives us a whole year to prepare for next budget.
I like that.
Oh, okay, I, I would say yes, other, but I just heard Frank say we needed a process. So now I'm, so now I'm back on, you know, the process that is needed. Go ahead, Com- Commissioner Ottman.
Oh, I, look, I, I'm not comfortable with throwing five thousand dollars at a charity that asks for fourteen thousand dollars. I've worked on charities, I mean, that's not, that's not a, a smart way to do it because uh, you know, we, we want to just sort of get it over with, no, we need the process. So if you want to hold twenty-five thousand, thirty-five thousand, whatever you want to hold, fine, but let, we're not, we're not going to just throw the money at them until we have the process in place, I don't think. I, I think we should go through that and, and have uh, uh, Frank and the City Manager present it to us. It's only in September, the first meeting is September and then, you know, everyone can fund what they want to fund and call it a day. But I, I don't think we should be throwing money at it.
Okay, so, so try and move it along. Is it okay to put a placeholder for twenty-five thousand dollars in the process and wait for City Manager and her team with Frank to come back with the process? Everyone's okay with that? Yes, 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 great.
Thank you, Mayor.
Um, Commissioner Llewellyn and her resiliency, I wasn't going to forget, I told you I wrote my notes.
Okay, um, the only thing I want to say about that is I do think resiliency, number one, is, is important. I do think that we're already, that we're doing some of that already and it is done, it keeps building in the city. However, the county has a resiliency board and has a resiliency plan and it does include Dania Beach, um, and it's actually through the MPO. So before we go spending a whole lot of money on um, specialists and engineers and all these other people that are going to cost us a ton of money, I think we need to go and take a look at that plan and see where we fit into it because we may not need it in the city. It might not be something that's absolutely necessary, it might not be something that we need to spend the money on.
Yeah, of course. The, the, the engineer and the environmentalists that worked on it with the other cities, they always work in conjunction with the county. So they, they certainly consult the, the person of the county who, and the plan, that plan as well is taken into consideration.
I just don't want us duplicating efforts and money.
Nope, it's totally, it's totally common and, and all the other cities that have done it. Um, yeah, they, they all, they all work with that, that county plan and it's uh-
I just didn't know if everybody was even aware, uh, because it didn't sound like it. It sounded like we were just talking about, because nobody's done it before, but it is being done, so, okay, that's all.
Awesome, um, Vice Mayor, is that an old hand? Yes, old hand, new hand, okay, uh, there's any-
I'm up to date.
Up to date, all right. I see no one, no more hands right now, I am going to be respectful of, of the few people that have come um, to speak and I'm going to allow Linda Wilson to speak. Lower her hand, let's see.
Can you hear me?
Yes, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Linda Wilson, President, Friends of the Dania Beach Library. Uh, I was unaware that there even was an application this year, since none were awarded last year. Uh, I never received any notice. Now, we did get a, a, recently a check from you and you will be getting a thank you letter for that. That was from the year twenty, nineteen twenty. Uh, and anyway, we would not have put in one for this year because we have the sufficient amount of money that you gave us that we are going to use in this year's, this full year because we did no programs last year. And I hope that part of that will be in what we talked about last year with the hope that we would be able to do a collaboration with the CACAB, the Friends of the Dania Beach Library and the Parks and Recreation to create performing arts programs that will be out in the city. In as much as we are unable right now to do those programs in the library and may not be able to do them even until maybe the spring, we will have funds and I will be more than willing to talk to my board about contributing them to that specific funding for performing arts throughout the city. We have to do that for the community, we just have to, thank you.
Thank you, and, and like yourself, I have an organization too, I didn't know that it was there, but it, it was there and people obviously signed up for it and um, kudos to them for being persistent and diligent and doing their due diligence and we'll just wait to the results and try again next, next year. Anyone else have any more comments? Yes, Commissioner Llewellyn?
Um, yeah, I actually, I, I'll bring it up now, um, I could bring it up at the meeting, but I'll just bring it up now so you're all aware. Um, and I need to see if, if everyone's in agreement to do this or have some consensus on it. Um, the job training program for the marine industry, we haven't been able to get much of a response from the public, unfortunately. We've sent out some mailers, um, the Housing Authority actually helped and, and sent out their own mailers um, to everybody in Dania Beach that's up within the Housing Authority. Um, I've reached out to um, our, um, our electeds in Washington and in Tallahassee who have also been assisting with, with trying to get the word out. I've had numerous meetings with individuals um, from different marine maritime businesses throughout the community, um, all of whom are very interested in, in assisting and doing what they can, but they haven't been able to generate the people that we meet. So I have since gone back and had a conversation with the City Manager, Assistant City Manager, um, our BIO, a few other people and we, and CRA Director as well about things that we can do to help get the word out and try to get more interested in. Um, two things have come out of that. One, we have developed a, a plan to actually get notification of this to every household in the city. Um, but that's going to cost some money. So what I'm asking for is that we can repurpose six thousand dollars of the money that was set aside to do this program for the grants and put it towards this um, mailing and, and the other promotions that we're going to do. Um, so it's not like taking any money, any new money, it's just money that's already there and just taking it out of that fund and repurposing it for this particular purpose. Um, the other part of it is that I've had some very interesting conversations with some people in the marine industry who want to partner with us um, and in the fall do a job fair, um, which would be a maritime industry job fair that would um, be in Dania Beach and I'm already, like I said, I'm already talking to uh, our, our City Manager and Executive Director about this and uh, for the CRA to see if we can all kind of work together on it and um, try to do it the right way. Um, wouldn't be until the fall, but I wanted to give you a heads up that that's part of what in the plans is, is that we can then promote it further through that. So what I really would need from you is just consensus to repurpose six thousand dollars of the money that's already in that fund for the purpose of further advertising marketing.
How much money is already in the fund?
It was seventy-five thousand initially. Yes.
I heard two numbers, I'm sorry. Two people were speaking at the same time, so I didn't hit the number.
Seventy-five thousand dollars initially. We've had one person who's been able to utilize the money, so there's quite a bit left.
And this would just be for a mailer?
Mailer, and then we've talked about some other things that we can do as well, but the estimate has been um, around six thousand, Candido can probably speak to that more.
Okay, I, I mean, I would, I hope that maybe you could, have we thought about maybe you doing a video or, or trying to advertise it more on our, on our social media that wouldn't cost any money? It just seems to me, if we've already allocated seventy-five thousand and only one person has taken hold to take six thousand of those dollars and then push it back into, you know, trying to get them back into it. I, I, I don't like the, I would like for us to exhaust every free possibility.
And part of the plan.
And so maybe wait till the fall, do you have the other things that you are working on before we, before we even thought of doing that, that I would be more comfortable that way?
That is all part of it, it's all part of the plan. And some of the materials that were sent out previously, we've actually changed them up to uh, push the fact that it is um, the starting salaries for the positions so that people realize, because I don't think that, I think that's part of the problem, people don't realize how much the jobs pay. So we're pushing that aspect of it. Um, I, Candido, do you want to jump in here, because I know you've done a lot of work on it?
Uh, yes, uh, yes Commissioner, Candido, so first, as, as you stated, Commissioner Llewellyn, we revised the flyer to start to putting, uh, replacing a, a starting salary up to sixty thousand dollars in the flyer. We've been posting it- We've been posting it on Fa- on Facebook, on the website, on the front page. We're doing, we're posting it also on Dania Press. Uh uh we're getting a half page or in, oh, actually a full page for Dania Press. Uh the grants for the program are seventy-five hundred dollars. As you stated, we already have one qualified applicant that's in the program. And basically by using this, up to six thousand dollars, we'll be able to, we we'll be able to send a colorful uh postcard with all the information of the program to every single household in the city of Dania Beach. Again, this this program is specifically targeting Dania Beach residents and and using six thousand dollars to send it to every household in the city would just uh re- reduce the grants from ten to nine and and definitely e- e- expose the program to all the residents in the city. It's definitely a win-win and we believe it's going to increase the applicants into the program and and create an excitement in the community by mailing out this postcard.
Okay, I I mean, I'm not comfortable with that, but I'll wait to hear from the rest of you all. I mean, it just seems to me that it was hard to find interested people. We put out seventy-five thousand dollars. We probably have, what, sixty-seven uh five hundred left? And and then we want to expend some of those monies to try and get more people interested in, in, I don't know, it's, I'm just.
Yeah, I mean, I I would say maybe do another round of the of like the social media videos because as we all know from, you know, when like you run for election, those those postcards, I mean, nobody looks at postcards anymore. So, I mean, I don't know. I I feel like even like Face, I don't know if we can do it, but like Facebook ads or something like that, which are so much more cost-effective and you can do targeting to the Dania Beach area and even target your um age demographic and interests. Um like you get so much more bang for your buck with that, with uh with those than I would imagine the postcards.
Is AMO doing any advertising?
Oh, yeah.
That I'm not sure about.
So maybe we can reach out to them because it benefits them for them to probably do some advertising. And and I and I think that there needs to be education to the community. A lot of people don't even know what, you know, maritime really is or or what it is. And so um maybe going into having sign, sign up to something like that at our parks and just more signage that we already have in our budget to be able to do. But sharing the ad cost and reaching out to AMO and seeing if, you know, they're in it with us to do the advertising as well, I think, I think it will be much more beneficial. I know I went on the simulator and maybe do a video on the simi- simulator. And I mean, there's very cool things that that are eye-catching that we can use on social media um that are very much more cost-effective. I mean.
And well, it might be nice if everybody maybe did something to add to it. That wouldn't be a, if everybody wanted to do a video or do a video together. That's fine. But I still think, not everybody has access to social media, not everybody is on social media, not everybody is just on the internet. So I still think a a a simple postcard is fine. And we've tried to keep the cost down as much as possible. So I don't see what the harm is. It's money that's already set aside. It's not like it's, like, I mean, it's 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 money that's already there. So.
I know, but it was there for the, you know, the grant, for me. That's just my comment. You have two other people that really haven't spoken on it. So you 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 I don't know. It's up to, I guess it's up to them. But I mean, I I, we grilled for twenty-one thousand dollars. We grilled a team of for thirty, forty minutes for twenty-one thousand dollars. And then there still was not just support to do it again, but she has to come back and prove herself again just to be able to spend placeholder money. And, you know, I can imagine if I said on top of that, let's spend some of that money to advertising for it. I I just, I I I know it's set aside, but it's set aside for a specific purpose. And I don't have, I don't have a problem, you know, joining in and doing the video and doing whatever it needs, but I want to exhaust those possibilities before I I make that type of decision. Commissioner Davis and Vice Mayor, you guys have anything to add?
Well.
Yeah.
You know, I guess, you know, I mean, there's, there's a lot of good comments both sides of this. And um, you know, I I think that um, you know, that the program needs to be exposed and there's, there's a lot of money there. So I mean, I mean, you do the, shoot the cards, you can put signs in the waterways, you can put uh signs over AMO uh out there or not, around that property in the corner. I mean, to intrigue the people and put up the things out there and just, you know, use it all and and get get it working. I mean, it doesn't matter. I I it doesn't I do know that um I I have sent out flyers similar to postcards. It does work for me, okay, my business. I do know sending out, uh added to a the Dania Press, something like that, is similar to send the card. It does work. People acknowledge that. Um there's, there's multiple ways of using the media, um whether it's um Facebook, like uh like Commissioner Otman said, whether it's putting a postcard, whether it's putting signs on those properties. I think that if we, I think, you know, in in respect of that, I think that, you know, just the postcard itself may not be as strong as it needs to be. But I think if we're gonna do that, maybe we should have a, if you want to do the postcards, you know, have two or three other things to back up to it, to, you know, make the impact. Uh that's, that would just be my comment.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, um thank you, Mayor. Um as somebody who's recruited uh programs in the past for university at different levels, I do know you need to have a multi-approach in order for it to work. Uh the, what works most, uh and what I haven't, what I did hear, I think there's going to be a job fair or something like that. You have to get to the people, you know, that uh you're gonna have, you know, if some people may look at the card, some people may not, it, you know, I I do agree that it it can help you. And if you, if it's recommended by the administration and you think that it will help you, but I think really getting to the people, making sure that you're out there. Uh social media is another level, but really making sure that you create an environment where the prospective students who would be in this, interested in this program are going to be concentrated at an event or at an area to get them. I would rather see you spending money to get these people to an event so you have a lot of prospective people who are truly interested in that. But if you feel like this is something that will assist you in addition to doing those other things, then I'm here to support you. But I do know that, you know, as somebody who recruited different kinds of, all different kinds of educational programs, it's not until you get into the face of the people that you can really try to uh make the most difference. So that, that's my opinion. Um I'm here to support you if you feel like that's going to be one of the elements that you want to use, but I I don't necessarily know that it's the most effective uh way to do it.
So it sounds like I do have the support to go forward with that.
Well, I'm gonna ask that we reach out to AMO so they can share the cost. Um since we don't even know if they're advertising, I know six thousand dollars is a lot of money just for advertising. We've all campaigned before. We all know that I've, you know, so six thousand dollars is a lot of money just for advertising. I know the Dania Beach Press is only nine hundred for a full-page ad and you guys were talking about a half-page ad. So like when we're putting these these things into perspective, that's a lot of money for advertising. Either way you look at it, I'm, I want the people, I want the program to work, obviously. Um it's already allocated for. I wish it was, I wish it was, I wish you were coming back and saying, we need a second round of it because so many people, you know, took advantage of it. And that's why I'm saying I really want to see the job fair go well and and those types of things. I just think six thousand dollars is just too much money for advertising. Um so I, could we reach out um City Manager to AMO and see if they could share that cost? Um and maybe bring it down?
Certainly. Um I I just need to know if if you guys are comfortable with the the six thousand dollar um appropriation because one of the things that we had thought to do um not just, you know, advertise or or publicize and inform the people about this grant that's available, but also use it as an opportunity to let them know, stay tuned, we got a job fair uh um coming. Uh follow us on on Instagram, follow us on social media. Hey, by the way, email us at 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 this email address because we want to make sure that we have your information for code RED. So we were, we were gonna cast a wide net in regards to not just informing people about this program, but also letting them know about, hey, stay, stay in touch with with the city of of Dania Beach and hey, stay tuned for this job fair as well. But we could certainly reach out to AMO. And if I can, um I would also let you know that I've already had a couple of meetings just in the last week with individuals who want to partner with us for our job fair and they are willing to help us with the cost of that. So I'm already working towards future on this. So it just would help to get the 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 money set aside for the things that we want to do now to try to get the word out. So. I think I have.
Other comment?
I'm okay with that.
All right. Anything else?
Can I say one thing? Can I say one thing, Mayor? You know, it's a, you know, being in retail, this is kind of interesting for me because uh what this does is it creates a a way to try to really find out how we impact the the residents of Dania, which which is a good way to find out. And I know we're talking about six thousand dollars in uh card stuff. You know, I mean, I I try to find a way to get to people. And I also try to research when they come in, how did you hear about it? And when you, when you do that, when you do that. So let's just say, for instance, we get some partners on this and we do put the cards out and we do maybe uh put an ad in the paper and we do put some, a big sign at AMO to decide to partner with us. When we have the job fair, they come to sign in, we could ask a question, how did you hear about us? You know, and we do that, that helps us. Maybe they'll come, not, maybe nobody will come and say, well, I saw the sign. And that's, then, you know, that's the effective way to go. So, I mean, just some ideas of, so just throwing it out there and just doing one thing or two, or that, we should do multiple things and see which is effective for this particular thing and was was better for us in the future. So that's just my suggestion.
Awesome. City Manager, could you give us a breakdown at the next meeting or whatever you get it of what exactly um the timeframe that the advertisement and and what those monies are going to, what type of advertisement the monies are going to, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Anything else? Nothing else? Okay. Well, I think we are adjourned. You all have a great night. I want to thank the City Manager and her team. This has been the smoothest budget to date that I've ever been a part of and the quickest budget discussion I've ever been a part of. Um and so I want to thank staff and and my colleagues for doing their homework before they got here and knowing everything that they wanted to talk about and being respectful for everyone's opinions. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to uh to say all right, I'm on. I just wanted to say, you know, Mayor, I did, you're, you're, you're right. Uh I think the strategic planning sessions that we had prior to this really put us in place. Uh this uh, this really was, I generally enjoyed it all. You know, I mean, I I've had a good time with everybody. We've gotten along, like you said. And uh next week, we're all going to be together again doing the Leaks of Cities and uh continue working hard for the residents of Dania Beach and for our administration. I'm I'm really excited. I mean, I think things are going great for us right now. And uh and I just wanted to say that out loud because I'm I'm happy to be with guys. So, thank you.
Oh, thank you. We'll take that as a adjournment. Mean a adjourn.
Thank you. Good night. Thank you.
Night.
Night, everybody.
Night.
Bye.